To approve the town board meeting held on 9/12/2018.
Mr. President.
Second.
All those in favor, please, or any board comments before we approve this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? Carrie Namus, thank you.
Make a motion to approve abstract number 40 dated October 3rd, 2018, and abstract number 41 dated October 10th, 2018, as presented.
Second. Any board comments?
Yes, with respect to abstract 41, I asked a vendor for an explanation on what the invoice is. I was frankly not satisfied with the response. I was late this afternoon. I sent a follow-up, I haven't received it back yet.
Which item was it, John?
That would be abstract 41, check number 53970, $2,500 to Strategic Management Solutions.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Strategic Management Solutions.
Oh, EDHRC?
Yeah, so, I mean, unless the board wants to hold that check out, I'll just vote no enough on the whole thing.
And you sent it late this afternoon?
Well, I had sent the email yesterday around 2:00. She responded around 3:00 o'clock this afternoon, and my follow-up was sent not long thereafter, and I haven't received it back. I mean, I don't, honestly, given her response, I don't know that I'm going to be satisfied with the follow-up response, so.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I just won't know the whole thing.
This is regardless?
But I'm not going to vote yes on it if I have abstract 41.
No, no, and no one is asking you to.
In regards to the voucher process?
As regards to some items in the voucher, specifically attributing the amount of time spent on one specific item, which she said she was unable to do. I mean, I keep track of my time at my work, by the quarter hour, so I've questioned whether or not it's possible to say I spent nine hours on these eight items over the course of three days, but I can't tell you how much time I spent on any one individual item. I don't really find that plausible. I certainly, you know, so at this point, I'm not going to vote for that chart. If you need to go against the whole thing, I'll fight for that.
No, that's your choice. And we will get that, you know, we'll follow up. I mean, if we need a more detailed, you know, invoice, then I'm sure we can do that.
I hope so.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay.
No.
I'll say no as well.
Okay. Three ayes and two nays, the motion passes. Thank you.
John, as a follow-up to that, if you do receive it back, would you email us or let us know?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, John, just an abstract budget modding.
And make motion to approve the budget modifications and amendments, or amendment there's one, as listed.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously, thank you. We'll now have a public hearing to consider passing a local law to exceed the 2% tax cap for 2019 for the 2019 Town and Cisro budget. It by no way means that we're going to do that, but that gives us the flexibility to manage the budget as it needs to be done. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider passing the local law to exceed the 2% tax cap for the 2019 Town and Cisro budget. The tax cap, which first applied to local governments beginning in 2012, limits tax levies, levy increases to the lesser rate of inflation or 2% with some exceptions, including a provision that allows municipalities to override this tax cap. According to the state comptroller Thomas P. DiNapoli, property tax levy growth for local governments will be capped at 1.02% for 2019, increasing slightly from 2018. I have proof of publication and posting, so I'll now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to approach and speak either in favor or against?
I will. Carol Perry McKinnon. I'm not in favor of it. It's just like he, Mr. Carr pointed out, somebody overlooked something here. That would be money spent, that should be spent, the thing that you're talking about.
Oh, okay, that.
Towards the budget. So let's do our homework and pay attention to what's being passed.
Oh, you're talking about the abstract?
Yes, but he's saving you money through the budget. That $500 and some dollars that she's claiming.
Right, the $2,500 on the voucher?
That would pass tonight, you would have paid it.
It did pass. That's a legitimate expense, he just wants more detail. It's a legitimate expense.
Well, there's questions, all right, so.
We're going to answer the questions.
I'm against it.
Anyone else?
John, another question, Rick Ford. I know all of you know the best way to balance a budget is to contain expenses, and certainly encourage you all to do that. A little history, in 2010, there was a citizens committee that performed a study of the Cisro Police Department. Couple of the items that were raised were concerned that pensions, health insurance, and salary expenses were going to get totally out of control and start to escalate and be unmanageable. And at that time, I also want to add, it was not critical of the policemen and the job that they do, but it also made note of the fact that there are three police agencies policing our town, and frankly, people just didn't feel that there was that much crime in this town. But the decision was made by the board, by the supervisor at that time, a statement was made, that we should keep them as long as we can, as long as we can afford it. And I thought, then, that's a statement you don't want to hear from a public official. So, time has passed, I looked at the preliminary budget, and folks, I think we're at the point where we have to take a hard look at that department and do whatever we can to contain those expenses, because we will not be able to afford it. So I think the time is now that Jim Carr was looking for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and I will move for the adoption to approve the following resolution read in its entirety, to be known as Local Law Number Eight of 2018, as follows. Town of Cisro Local Law Number Eight for the year 2018, a local law to override the tax cap levy limit established in General Municipal Law 3-C. Being enacted by the Town Board of the Town of Cisro is follows. Section One, Legislative Extent, it is the intent of this local law to override the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the Town of Cisro pursuant to General Municipal Law 3-C, and to allow the Town of Cisro to adopt a budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by General Municipal Law 3-C. Section Two, Authority, the local law is adopted pursuant to subdivision five of General Municipal Law 3-C, which expressly authorizes the Town Board to override the tax levy limit by the adoption of the local law approved by a vote of at least 60% of the Town Board. Section Three, Tax Levy Limit Overriding, the Town Board of the Town of Cisro located in the county of Anadaga is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year 2019 that requires a real property tax levy in extensive excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in General Municipal Law 3-C. Section Four, Separability, if any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law, or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation, or circumstance, shall be adjusted by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid or unconstitutional, such order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder thereof, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law, or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation, or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which said such judgment or order shall be rendered. Section Five, Effective Date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Ms. Cosman, please take a little call vote.
Counselor, Counselor Blakey?
I vote no.
Counselor Cushman?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
No.
And Counselor Carr?
Yes.
And Supervisor Deneski?
Yes.
Thank you. We pass three to two.
Now, we'd like to make one comment. I've been accounted with 45 years of experience, and I still don't have a clue how a 2% tax cap can come out to be 1.02%. And yet, there are organizations, which will be unnamed, who have as high as 3.7%, and they call that under the 2% cap. Some organizations are allowed to disallow things like capital improvements. We'd like to do that. We have a highway garage we're going to spend a lot of money on. If we could disallow that, we could be under the cap for the next 10 years. But they give us an unreasonable number that nobody seems to be able to explain to me how it came to be. Does 1.02, 1 and 2 1/100ths, equal a 2% cap? Doesn't to me. That's all I've actually.
The governor, who has pushed this on the towns in New York State, with the understanding that unfunded mandates would be controlled, he himself has a 4% increase issue, okay? So let's, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there. And then, we also have another unfunded mandate that has been pushed on the town. Our fire departments are required this year to provide cancer insurance to every one of the members. And I'm being told it's like $350 per member. We have five fire departments, but the governor did not tell us how we're supposed to pay for that. And yet, 1.02%. You've got to be realistic.
And to add with that, I worked with a couple of the fire departments this year helping with their budgets, and when we got information on this mandated unfunded insurance that we have to buy, this is the only company that's going to be able to purchase for all of the state.
Yeah, sole source. The insurance is also required for every single person who is rated to wear a mask, even if they don't go into buildings.
So these are the kind of things, the state has given us a time for this, and you spend the money, think of the number of fire departments there are. We need people to go help the service force, these are volunteers, they deserve the insurance, but, you know, to be unfunded mandates is just another, I'm done.
Thank you. We're now going to have a public hearing to talk about lowering the speed limit on Bartel Road from Burton Road East to Caton Road, or Cathin Road, from the current speed limit of 40 to 35. I have proof of publication and posting. I will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak either in favor or against lowering the speed limit on Bartel Road from 40 to 35 miles an hour?
Since I proposed it, I might as well speak. So, currently, we have, I live in Burton Dyer, so all day long, I see cars flying out of the nice and easy, the post office, the Caton Road, Miller Road, the hotel, and everyone's doing 50 miles an hour. And it takes you, if you don't jump on your gas, you will be rear-ended every time you pull out of there. So, funny but not funny, yesterday, right before I closed, oh, I lost it. Car accident, another one, because someone pulled out, and someone else pulled out, and T-boned him. The guy driving the road could have died instantly. Luckily, the person let off their gas and just rolled into him and really damaged their truck. But I think just five miles an hour will give you half a second to at least accelerate a little more, or give someone else the time to at least hit their brakes. It's a very scary intersection, and I know most people aren't affected by it, but I don't want to see somebody die. I don't, it's not a pleasant situation, so that's how I feel about it. I hope you guys take it in consideration.
Thank you. Chief, did you have anything to add to that? I know you took a look at it, Forrest.
Yeah, and he's correct, the speed does range from 45 to 50, probably about 70-80% of traffic on that section of the road. What I've also observed is there's a lot of pedestrians on that section there, the ones in the Rockland, the Nice and Easy, the Rockland Plaza, the Rockland Dyer, because there's a lot more commercial growth right there, so a lot of pedestrian traffic. A lot of handicap traffic as well, wheelchairs and devices.
Would anyone else like to address the board about the speed limit issue there? Then I will close the public hearing. I'm sorry.
There was a petition, just out of curiosity, how many signatures was it on the petition?
In three days, I got over, I think, 50 or 57.
Okay.
I only needed 30.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, I support this, I'm just curious.
I've actually also had, I asked everyone, everyone's been asking me to extend it all the way to the end of Bartel. I just, I'm happy with what we have, that might be something down the road.
They gave a petition, then.
Yeah, I just don't want to see any of that.
Thank you, thank you for your efforts.
All right, there being no one else, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll move for the adoption of a resolution determining the lowering of the speed limit on Bartel Road from Burton Road East to Caton Road, from the current speed limit of 40 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour, is an unlisted action involving no permit granting authorities outside the town. The action will not have a negative impact on the environment, it does not require the completion of a draft environmental impact statement, be decided.
Second.
Any board, I'm sorry?
I was going to ask for a board discussion, I did want to make a comment as well.
Okay.
I've lived in that area and drive that road every single day. The fact is, as I'm driving down through yesterday, today, and I see exactly what he's saying, looking at my speed from the time that I come down Bartel Road, because I live in Los Grabados, and 40 down through is reasonable, where there are no houses, just side roads coming in, but the time you come up over 81 Bridge, and people, and it's very busy, and you come down into the intersection, it's, I think myself, where I have to go so that I only make right-hand turns in, right-hand turns out, as opposed to making a left-hand turn and having to go across traffic, because it's scary. So I obviously am in favor of it, yes.
Okay, do I, I'll go ahead and carry the seeker to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously. I'll move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the lowering of the speed limit on Bartel Road from Burton Road East to Caton Road from the current speed limit of 40 to 35 miles an hour, to be known as Local Law Number Nine of 2018.
Second.
Any further board comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously, thank you. We'll be lowering. Thank you. We'll now have a public hearing establishing a fee in lieu of parkland contribution for construction of new residential structures in the town, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Carr, because John has put an awful lot of effort into this and done a nice job.
Thank you. So essentially, what this does is, for new apartment complexes of four units or more that are built outside of subdivision process, this establishes a one-time fee of $500 per unit, which shall be deposited into a special account for the Department of Parks and Recreation to be used only for expenses approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is in lieu of them contributing parkland, which is not always useful. I mean, if they just build an apartment complex and give us land, it may not be useful, it may not be in a good location. So this is much better, I think, for everybody involved, except for maybe the apartment complex. Certainly better for our parks and for our citizens.
And I'll just comment on that, John, thank you. We have an awful lot of people, there'll be more apartments coming to Cisro, you know, you're not going to stop them. People want to live here, we've made a community where people want to live, and, you know, people have kids, they have families, and they're using our parks, so that cost should be spread evenly amongst people who would use the parks. John, do you want to read the resolution on this? Do you have it?
I don't, and we got to, we got to read it anyway.
Well, anyway, the public hearing, okay. I'll have you read it. We'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak either in favor or against levying a fee on, one-time fee on new apartment complex buildings? Joni?
I just want to speak in favor of this, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission, we just had a meeting, and they were 100% in favor of it. It also puts us in line with other communities within Anadaga County that are already and have been charging this fee, not only to just subdivision lots, but also to apartment complexes as well. And it is really the only way we're going to be able to improve, put new facilities in or add new attractions for the residents and the needs in the future through this kind of money and maintaining this kind of a fund. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joni, and that is a good point. So, right now, we're going to establish this at $500. The towns of Camillus and Lysander also have a $500 fee. Duett has a $1,000 fee, and Clay only has a $50 fee. I think 500 seems appropriate. I think Lysander and Camillus are comparable towns. I think 1,000 is probably excessive. Certainly 50 is not enough.
John, this goes in two pages.
I move the adoption, while we have a little bit of hearing.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close? We'll now close the public hearing.
I move the adoption of a resolution to approve a local law establishing a fee in lieu of parkland contribution for construction of new residential structures in the town, excluding parcels that paid a parkland contribution fee at the time of final plan approval pursuant to subdivision regulations, Town Code Section 185 and Set. Purposes proposed legislation to maintain existing town parks and establish future parklands and programs in response to increase demand for housing in the town. Although the current subdivision regulations require payment of a fee in lieu of land contribution, there is currently no fee associated with construction of apartment buildings outside the subdivision process. The proposed fee is $500 per approved apartment unit. All monies collected shall be deposited in one or more separate accounts provided by law to be used only for capital expenditures related to public recreation of the Town of Cisro. Expenditures from the fund or funds so established shall be made by the Town Board after recommendations by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Payments in lieu of parklands should be made prior conditions of building permits. This local law shall be effective upon filing with the Secretary of State. This local law shall be known as Local Law Ten of 2018.
Second.
Any further board discussion or comments?
Do we need to read the actual text of the statute, Mr. Germaine, or is that resolution sufficient?
I think we need to read it.
I can.
Want to read it, John?
Okay, yeah, no problem. Yeah, no problem. Chapter 16 of the Town Code is hereby amended by adding a new section, Section 68-16.1, entitled, "In lieu of Parkland Donation for Apartments," with the following text, subsection A. There shall be imposed a fee of $500 per approved apartment unit for any apartment units to be constructed in the town. This fee shall not apply to apartment developments of less than four units, and shall not apply to any development that paid an apartment-based fee in lieu of parkland contribution as part of the subdivision process. This fee shall be due and payable prior conditions for the building permits for construction of new apartments or renovation of an existing structure in two apartment units. Subsection B. All monies collected shall be deposited in one or more separate accounts provided by law to be used only for capital expenditures related to public recreation of the Town of Cisro. Expenditures from the fund or funds so established shall be made by the Town Board after recommendation by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Subjects seen, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State.
Second. Any further board comments or discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously, thank you. Joni?
I'm going to set a public hearing for a zone change. Move the adoption of a resolution to set a public hearing for Wednesday, October 24, 2018, at 6:30 to consider a zone change from industrial to general commercial for the properties located at 6176 South Bay Road, tax map number 051 dot dash 01 dash 38 dot zero, and 6180 South Bay Road, tax number 051 dot dash 01 dash 39 point zero.
Second. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously, thank you.
Set a public hearing for the 2019 preliminary budget. Move for the adoption of a resolution to set a public hearing on Wednesday, November 14, 2018, at 6:30 PM, for the town's 2019 preliminary budget, including special districts and fire protection districts.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
2019 preliminary budget workshops. Move for the adoption of a resolution to schedule a Town Board workshop for the 2019 preliminary budget, including special districts and fire department protection districts, on Monday, October 15, 2018, at 5:30 PM, at the Cisro Town Hall.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption of a resolution to authorize the following expenses for the Highway Brad Project. $12,951.16 to Lawman Heating and Cooling. $14,012.50 to NAP Electric Incorporated. $5,450 to Biggerton Precast and Supply. $31,557.33 to Coleman Industries Incorporated. And $24,536.06 to MRV Group.
Second. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dick. You seconded. Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve the following appointments and pay rate changes for the Parks and Recreation Department. Kyle Tombs, as recreation attendant, to pay rate of $11.10 per hour with start date of October 15, 2018. Scott White and Victor Imigiano, which is a rate change, recreation leader, to pay rate of $11.10 per hour with start date of October 23, 2018. Justin Delvecchio and Anthony Tricar, Tricarico.
Tricarico.
Tricarico, close. Which is a rate change, recreation attendant, to the pay rate of $11.10 per hour with a start date of October 24, 2018. Patty White, recreation attendant, with a pay rate of $11.10 per hour with a start date of October 23, 2018. And Mike Tricarico, which is a rate change, a recreation attendant, to pay rate of $20 per hour with start date of October 24, 2018.
Second.
Any board comment or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Board of Assessment and Review, we move for the adoption of a resolution to reappoint Andrew Foster to the Board of Assessment and Review, effective immediately for a term to expire on September 30, 2023.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously, thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the following purchases for the Highway Department. $95,390 to Garcal for 2,200 tons of salt. Budget code DB514241. $5,590 to Sunny Crest for 17 two-by-two by two catch basins with knockouts. $11,000 to Crossroads Highway for assorted types collars. $11,000 to Crossroad Highway for assorted types collars. $5,000 to Consella for dirt-slinging rail. And $4,468 to Tracy Road Equipment for power repairs to Truck 36.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We carry unanimously, thank you.
Look, I don't have the secret resolution for number 15. Do you have it?
I have it.
The first one, the first bullet item was a secret. I don't have the resolution, I just have the description.
It's right there, John. The resolution is after that first statement. It says the town is lead agency, thereby resolved into the town. You can read it right there.
The town is lead agency has determined the proposed action to be an unlisted action for, well, start at the beginning. Project is installation of a paved parking lot at Skyway Park, funding with a DASNE SAM grant of $125,000 sponsored by Esteban Alsterby. Move the adoption of the following resolution. The town is lead agency has determined the proposed action to be an unlisted action for the purpose of SCQR compliance, and note that the action requires no action by an outside permitting agency outside the town. Proposed action will not have a negative impact. Proposed action will not have a negative impact upon the environment, and therefore does not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement.
Second, any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve three thousand dollars to Brownecare Air Conditioning and Sheet Metal Incorporated for aluminum dock plate, stainless steel plate, and brackets fabricated for the dock. Budget code, A7110.459.
Seven.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents to Louis uniform, or eight ballistic vests to replace expired ones. BVP reimbursement, three thousand, one fifty-eight, twenty. Budget code, B312041.
Second, any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve and authorize a supervisor-executor agreement between Corella Real Estate and the town for the purchase of the old police department building units located at eight-two-three-six Burton Road. The purchase price is one thousand, twenty-two dollars. The work shall be completed within fourteen days of signing the final contract, which is subject to attorney approval.
Second, any board comment or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. We'll move to the discussion item. We have Don Snyder and Don Wos, who are members of our building committee, who, again, every meeting of supper, they've done such a great job. You have something for us tonight?
Yes, we do. We have a surprise. But let me first add what we just passed on the police building. We did put it out for bid. We had three bidders. One said he'd give us ten bucks for the double Y, but he leaves the single Y there. Another one said, I'll give you a real deal. I'll take all three of them away. We're forty-nine thousand dollars, meaning they will not give us forty-nine thousand. We will give them forty-nine thousand. The contract is being approved. We'll see a thousand, twenty-two dollars in our pocket, and all three of them will disappear. And we put a fourteen-day requirement on it because we want them gone. So anyway, that's just added a benefit. What we have today is, we know it's very hard for you to see the site that we're building our highway barn on, so we asked our site contractor, they do a fly drone thing every week for their progress, and they said, could you do that as a flyover? And they did it as a flyover. And you will be able to see what Tracy's about to show you. This is the whole site. It's actually forty acres, but we're only using about twenty-twenty-two. Does that thing actually work?
Yes. Right there. See that?
Oh, yeah? Wow. Okay. What we're looking at here is storage yard. There'll be most of it. Here will be paved. The rest of it will be stone. We're going now, we're going from north to south. Back here is our drainage system. The highway supervisor says we're going to have fish in there, so then we'll have little fishing nurbs and stuff by our fence. I'm afraid Chris might need to be thinking about eating the fish. This gravel area here, where you see two areas that are dug out, that is the yard, the inside of the building, that we will have all of our trucks and equipment in. And the area up here they're working on right now, which is dirt, is going to be the three mainage bays that we have, and the operations center, or the locker rooms and everything for our staff. You can see the golf course next door, so if we don't find somebody working, we'll probably have to go next door and get them off the green, but at least we'll know where they are. Thirty-one is in the background. Of course, our lake is back here. It's amazing what you see in this video, that we've got a lot of land yet. We've got a lot of trees. This was pretty much open area when we bought it. It was a farm. And Chris has talked to the woman that owned the farm, and one of the suggestions that we're probably made forward to the board is that we might want to name the lane coming into this site, the Bight Lane Farm Lane, we cleaned up and put out, and it'd be a little situation here for us to see, and it really ties our history to the site. The area that's up here would be an area that could be, in the future, a new town hall. Let's take care of this area first. We have big piles over here, that is all the top soil and structural soil that came off the site. We have stone sitting along here, waiting for this area to dry up, so we can then put the stone out. We want at least all the stone down where there will be pavement in the spring. We prefer to have all the stone down, but we may not make that.
Because of the wet conditions.
Because of the wet conditions. One of these, I think that I didn't point out when we were flying around here, there's a big crane with a drill on it, and it is drilling the caissons. This building totally sits on bedrock. We have thirty, thirty-six, seventy, here's the joint, you know, right there. They're drilling the caissons in that order. They put out a bedrock, which could be anywhere from five feet to almost head feet. Then you put a steel cage in there and fill it full of concrete. This building isn't going anywhere. We were lucky with that. Here they are moving, this truck is just moving the dirt from here to the front part, the front of the building where the mainage bays are going to be and the office area was three foot lower than the rest of the site. So we had to take that film and put it in there. So there you go. You've seen, you've seen something a lot of people haven't seen. Thank you, Doug.
Nice job.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to public input. Anything you'd like to approach.
Good evening, guys. I'm here to ask questions. I just wanted to thank the board of the Highway Department, Mr. Wasnick, for all the work you guys did this summer in my development for our roads. I know I've been talking about it for quite some time, and you guys have a phenomenal job. It makes a world of a difference. I know we have a long way to go in the town, but I know you guys are working diligently to do that. I do have a question. Earlier this year, I came forward with a petition for our streetlights. You guys approved that. That's going. We noticed that the charge for those are already on our taxes for everybody in the development, but nothing's been done. So I'm just curious how that process works, if we needed to pay upfront for them to install the lights, or it was supposed to happen after they were installed.